Everyone, we'd like to welcome you all to the Tuesday, April 1st. We know what day that is.
Yep.
Twenty twenty-five meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. I want to welcome everybody here. We have several guests with us and I know we have people watching online. I would like to welcome you all. Thank you all for tuning in to your local government. I'd like to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones. And our invocation this morning will be led by Dr. Matt Richardson, our Denton County Health Director, and then our pledge will be led by Commissioner Kevin Falconer. Again, please turn off your cell phones. Thank you. If you'll please stand.
Good morning, judges and commissioners. I want to start this morning's invocation with a verse. It's one of my favorite verses in the Bible. I probably have read it here before, so apologies for the repetition. It's a quick one. Hebrews eleven, one. A lot of us know it. Now faith is the assurance of things hoped for and the conviction of things not seen. And if we read it in the King James, I like it even better. Now faith is the substance of things hoped for and the evidence of things not seen. Let's pray. Our Father, we come to you this morning both grateful and penititive, and Father, we also come with you with requests because as your children, that's what we do. Father, we just thank you for the substance of our faith. We thank you for the evidence that we see in our lives with our families and the love that we have for those closest to us. We know that that's the substance of something larger than just us, something larger than ourselves. And Father, we thank you that that faith is woven and confirmed. And Father, we ask for that confidence that you promise. We ask for that confidence that we can keep that faith close to us and that we can share it and that it offers us peace and that it also spurs us on to mercy and grace for others, ourselves, and we know that that comes from you. Father, this morning, we just ask for safety because, Father, sometimes we can be fearful. So we ask for that safety for those who protect us. We ask for that protection. Father, we ask for the grace that we know that we need, and we ask for the strength to give that to others. Father, we ask for your mercy. When we fail you and we fail others, Father, we ask for that grace that we can move forward in your forgiveness. And Father, we thank you so much for the life of your son that teaches us on how to live our lives better and how that we can just glorify you in the way that we were taught in our faith. Father, we thank you for these things this morning, and we thank you for Jesus and his example, and we ask that these things can be given to us through his holy name. Amen.
Amen. If you would, please join me in our pledge to our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one indivisible, together in one.
And to our great state.
To honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Thank you, Commissioner Falconer. This morning, we, I got an early morning text about a water leak in one of our county buildings here on the campus. We were over there, attended to that, so we will be doing, we will be adding an emergency addendum to this agenda here momentarily. So anyways, we've been dealing with that this morning. I would like to go to item one for public input for items not listed on the agenda. I'm pleased we have several guests with us today that have registered to speak. Thank you so much for registering, and I would like to, I would like to remind all of our speakers that we, we do have a three-minute time limit on our, on our comments today, so we, but we welcome each of you, and I'll set a timer once you begin speaking. If you'll give your name and your address for the record, that'd be great. So our first registered speaker is Ms. Jane Schultz. I hope I pronounced that correct.
You did.
Ms. Jane. Okay, good. Good to see you again.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you remember me. My name is Jane Schultz. I live at ninety-nine thirteen Silver Rock Way in Denton. This is Robson Ranch. I'm a voter. I'm an election worker, and I'm a voter registrar. And I'm here to talk to you today about countywide election day voting, aka vote centers. I'm going to share with you the results of a count of the number of registered voters who were redirected from polling places during the May twenty-eighth primary runoff and the November fifth general election. But first, before I do that, a little history. So I spoke to you about this about, almost exactly a year ago, and since then, I've been educating myself. I've been going around the county, talking to a lot of folks about this all over the county. I've been going to club meetings, church gatherings, and neighborhood events, and here's what I've learned. A lot of your voters get turned away from polling places on election day. Every time I ask at a meeting who this has happened to, a lot of hands go up, okay? This is not a rare occurrence. Most of these people don't understand why this happened to them, and when I tell them that this does not happen in ninety-nine other counties in Texas, they are puzzled. And when I explain to them that their county commissioners could fix this problem, could have fixed it for the last four years, but refused to do so, they don't like it. Some of them get angry. But we needed more than just a show of hands. We needed facts. So we needed to know how many voters actually get redirected from polling locations on election day, and the county up till now has not chosen to count this. So on May twenty-eighth and November fifth, election workers and judges counted them. Thanks to their work, I can tell you that an estimated fifteen percent, that's one in every six voters, in the May primary runoff on election day, were told they could not vote at the first polling place they visited. On November fifth, the biggest election turnout this county had ever had, has ever had, eleven percent. More than seven thousand registered voters were redirected, according to our count and the estimate that comes from that. This demonstrates the need for you to act to give your voters election day vote centers now. Now, the people who have done this study would be happy to meet with all of you, to answer your questions individually about how we did the count and why we think this change is necessary. I contacted your offices back in January and February and tried to set up meetings for this group. Only one person responded. That was Mrs. Mitchell, and we had a lovely meeting with Mrs. Mitchell a couple of weeks ago. She asked questions. We asked questions. We had a wonderful, cordial discussion. It was a very productive meeting. But we're not giving up. I'm going to contact all of you again, and I'm going to see if you're willing to meet with us now. Cordial, informational, and with that, I'll just add one last thing.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Complete your.
Assuming that the floor, that the Texas Legislature doesn't choose to put the rest of Texas in the same mess that Denton County is in on election day, you're going to hear a lot more from us starting this summer. Thanks for your time.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Rhonda Clark.
Good morning. I'm Rhonda Clark. I'm at one-one-two-one Ector Street here in Denton. I'd like to add a little bit to what Jane just talked about as far as people being misdirected. I started working in two thousand sixteen, election judge, alt judge, worker, poll watcher, so I do want to speak directly to November the fifth. As an election judge at C.H. Collins, had three instances of people who were misdirected, and they went to their precinct. They went to the correct place, but they were sent to C.H. Collins, one as far away as Flower Mound. And so when they got there, digging in the poll pad and the database and found out that they truly were where they were supposed to be, one of them had directions, so the poll pad spits out where you're supposed to go if you're at the wrong place. Glitch. I don't think there was anything intentional about the misdirection. Two of them had time to go back. I gave them all their information. This is where you need to be. This is your voter ID, all the good stuff. One, though, wasn't going to make it, and so he knew that his vote was not going to count. And I think this is a tragedy that could be solved with these voting centers. Glitches wouldn't matter. If they showed up, they're in the poll pad, any voting center would have counted their votes. And so I really would love to see this problem solved. We have the ability to do so, and I really love our county voting system. I think it's the most secure. It's the fairest, and I want us to do the very best that we can, and the voting centers would be the very best that we could do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next, let's go to Missy McCormick.
Good morning. My name is Missy McCormick. I live at eleven-eleven Ector Street in Denton. Thank you for the privilege of speaking with you this morning.
Yes, ma'am.
On November fifth, two thousand twenty-four, I volunteered to drive individuals who had shown up at the incorrect polling places to the assigned voting location they needed to go to. These were often students without access to dependable transportation. For instance, I drove a blind student from the Wesley Foundation at UNT, wrong precinct for that individual, or voting location, to the UNT Gateway, which was the correct precinct location. He was unfamiliar with the UNT Gateway, so I did walk him into the building, down the hall to where he needed to go to vote, and I waited for him for about twenty, thirty minutes outside, and as I was there, other people were coming out, and I could hear conversations. They looked like students saying, I'm at the wrong place. Some of them said, I'm not going to be able to vote. I've got to get to class. So I saw it firsthand that people were dealing with being at the wrong location. So once the student had finished voting, I offered to drive him to the building where he needed to go for his class. He commented, he only had ten minutes to spare, so I was grateful I was able to get him to his class on time and that he was able to vote. If we had countywide voting on election day, like many other counties in Texas, we would not have these kinds of issues. And I will say this, at a minimum, if countywide voting is not going to be available, registered voters should receive a postcard ahead of time telling them where their precinct voting location is, so they know where to go, because sometimes it changes, and sometimes people go to the wrong location. We are, we already know that. So anyway, I want to thank you for your time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, let's go to Dale Frey.
Good morning, county commit.
Good morning, county commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Dale Frey. I'm a proud resident of Denton County, living at six-zero-one-seven Cypress Cove Drive in the Colony. I'm a former candidate for the Texas State Senate for District Thirty. I'm here today to speak in support of a simple but powerful idea, one that puts voters first, increasing participation in our democracy, and reflects the way people live and move in the world today. That idea is adopting vote centers for election day. Right now, Denton County voters must vote at a single assigned location on election day. If they go to the wrong place, whether be by mistake, because they moved recently, or because life got in the way, they get turned away. That's not just frustrating, but it's a barrier to democracy. Voting centers solve that problem. They allow any registered voter in Denton County to put a vote at any polling location on election day, just like we already do during early voting. It's modern, it's flexible, and it works. Other Texas counties like Travis, Dallas, and Callan County have already made this change and have seen success. They have seen more people vote, shorter lines, and fewer headaches for election workers and voters alike. This is about more than just convenience. It's about equity. Working parents, shift workers, students, seniors, and people with disabilities all benefit when we make voting simpler and more accessible. And in a growing county like ours, we should be leading the way, not lagging behind. Voting centers also make good fiscal sense. They can reduce costs over time by allowing us to consolidate underused precincts, focus staff, and resources more efficiently, and cut down on administrative efforts. Commissioners, I ask you to explore and support this transition, not as a partisan issue, but as a commitment to good governance and a stronger democracy. Let's make it easier, not harder, for the people of Denton County to vote. Thank you for your time and your service, commissioners.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. All right. Let's go to Dee Fox.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dee Fox, and my address is eight-four-four-six Tyler Drive, Lantana, Texas, seven-six-two-two-six.
Good morning. Thank you for being.
And to the commissioners, I thank you for your opportunity to be able to speak to you this morning regarding election day voting centers. This is a little more personal for me. You know, voting is not just a civic duty. It is, to me, the cornerstone of our democracy. And just a little sidebar, my father fought in World War II, and he was born in Longview, Texas, fought in World War II, and was part of the greatest generation. However, voting was not always a given for him like it is for me today. So I feel like that his sacrifices that he made along with many others gives me the opportunity to vote and to be able to even speak to this body today. And so when I go and vote, and I have voted since nineteen seventy-two in the five states that I've lived in, both national, local, and state, and so when I go to vote, I always take the memory of my father and those who sacrificed for me and many others. And so I just want to show this picture of my dad. And so when I was in this last election, it was my privilege to work as an election clerk, and for the first time in a national election. And so it was very disheartening to me for people who would come to the wrong voting place, and I had to redirect them, and then all the different little glitches that you've heard so far, is that I'm thinking, no, wow, that's very disheartening, because I think that elections and people having the right to vote, especially for me as an African American, to be able to even serve as an election clerk, and then to have to redirect people in the wrong spot. And I think that if we had election centers, it certainly would make it more, and it is a convenience, but also to give people the opportunity to voice their opinions and that every vote is counted and that every citizen has the right to vote and that we make that convenient, just like in the world today. We do all kinds of things to make things convenient for us, you know, drive up banks, tellers, and voting, and online shopping, and even you can do Zoom with your, with a physician. So my question is, why not make that convenient for the voting process, which is part of our bedrock of our democracy? So for me, I would just encourage you to think about having that opportunity for increasing voter turnout and also the fact that you can eliminate a lot of these voting confusion, you know, because most of the time when you redirected people, it was like, well, I voted here before. And so, you know, we could think about, think about if we make all of these other constituents to, to, to make it convenient for our early data lives, I would think for our democracy that we can have voting centers to enable everyone to have the opportunity to voice their opinions, and every vote counts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. We appreciate your father's service to the nation. All right. Let's go to Emily Meisner.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. I'm Emily Meisner, seventeen-hundred Cordero Court, Denton. I'm the former Democratic Primary Elections Administrator and Democratic Election Liaison. I've since retired from my position, but I'm here in support of Vote Centers for Denton County. I'll specifically outline the methodology that we use to capture the data on redirected election day voters. Unfortunately, our current system of precinct-based election day voting presents much confusion, too many voter redirects, and an overwhelming number of provisional ballots for Republicans and Democrats. Some could argue it negatively affects Republican voters even more. But vote centers are nonpartisan in nature and should be approached as such. Denton County Elections is in support of vote centers, as are many Republicans and Democrats alike. as are many Republicans and Democrats alike. Our data was collected on two election days from Democratic judges. Redirects were recorded from twenty-three Democratic primary runoff Election Day locations on Tuesday, May twenty eighth. On Tuesday, November fifth, redirects were recorded from forty-three out of forty-seven Democratic primary judge Election Day locations. Other redirects were also recorded by Democratic alternate judges that served at some of the other ninety-eight Republican presiding judge Election Day locations. For both election days, I requested that all Democratic judges hand tally any voters that reported to the wrong Election Day location. This includes both Democratic and Republican voters. Although they were not tallied separately according to party affiliation, that would be helpful in the future. I had the Democratic election workers report their tallies back on our election worker feedback survey that I created. And then Jane Scholes ran the totals and projected the results across all the election day's voting locations. That's how we got our data. Our election workers are unified in their frustration of having to redirect such large amounts of voters that report to the wrong Election Day locations. Many voters even get redirected multiple times. This yields to an influx of unnecessary provisional ballots, many of which end up not counting. So until vote centers can happen, we hope Denton County Elections will have the election workers tally all redirected voters at all Election Day locations and make the results public so that everyone knows what's at stake. Thank you for listening and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Emily. It's good to see you again. All right. Next, let's go to Anik Cook. Hope I pronounced that right. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Anik Cook and I live at nine oh eight Charleston Lane in Savannah. I also brought my neighbor and alternate judge, Ricky Pine, with me. She was originally scheduled to take the training at the flooded location.
Well, thank y'all for being here. Thank y'all for being here.
So I'm an election clerk, usually at Frisco Fire Station Six. It's a very popular and visible voting location on a busy tour fair and we get a lot of early voting traffic. On any election day, about three hundred of people in line are in the wrong location and are very upset about it. We even have to use one of our clerks to look up their location while they wait in line to make sure they are in the correct location. If they're not within their correct polling location and the driving directions, if they are not. Once it gets to be past six P M., some people can't make it back to their correct polling place. And also, the Election Day polling places are not consistently the same through each election. Therefore, I ask you for voting centers in Denton County like they have in Tarrant, Collin, and Dallas County. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and thank you for involvement. All right. And we have one more. And she does not wish to speak, so that is Carol Sof. So thank you, Carol, for being here and registering online your public comment form. We appreciate you. I want to thank each and every one of y'all for being here today. We look forward to continuing the conversation and dialogue. This is not a publicly posted agenda item. And so we're not, we won't give official comments in response to that, but we appreciate y'all's involvement. I took good notes here. Appreciate y'all being here, okay? And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting and if you want to move on with your day, that is, we totally understand. But thank y'all for being here. All right. Next, let's go to. Let's go to our consent agenda members. Are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Falconer, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. All right. Let's go to item five A, approval of the bill report. Payments from C S D, Community Corrections, T A I P, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, V I T, interest in D A forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have two additions today. Both are to Atmos Energy totaling six hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents.
Do we have a motion for the amended bill report? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item five B, approval of budget amendment to allocate law enforcement officer standards and education funds received from the state of Texas in amount of fifty-one thousand four hundred and three dollars and five cents.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item five C, accept and approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five first quarter investment report from October through December of twenty twenty-four. Chair, move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item six A, approval of the sole source renewal of election stats, ballot verifier, and ballot redactor software support and maintenance from Severa L O C in amount of ninety-six thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion?
Just a quick, quick comment. I think this is really, especially when we're talking about election information, this is, I think, going to be a great thing for transparency because this is information that will be available online and so you can go out and.
Print all the information you want.
Yeah, it is. So it's going to be great for our constituents and our voters.
Yep. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item six B, approval of specifications, R F S Q two five two eight five six, Geotechnical Engineering Services, Department of Transportation and Engineering Projects, and appointment of an evaluation committee to include Tina Massey, Director of Transportation and Engineering, Stephen Belknepp, Director of Development Services, and Travis Thomas, Project Manager, Department of Transportation and Engineering.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item six C, approval or rejection of all proposals for R F P two five two eight four five administrative courthouse glass door replacement.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, six D, approval of specifications and authority to advertise for R F P two five two eight five eight mail pre-sort services and appointment of an evaluation committee to include Teresa Gravely, Administrative Manager, Print Mail, Holly Sedlosky, Chief Administrator, County Judge, and Tyler Rothrock, Courts Manager, County Clerk. Chair, move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six E, approval renewal of I T B two eight, I mean, two four two eight zero one, Employee Appreciation Event to the Circle R Ranch.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven A, report for miscellaneous equipment and software services is presented for recording purposes only. And then let's go to item seven B. This is approval of budget request one zero zero seven six zero for Human Resources to increase revenue and allocate expenditures to the H R U H C Wellness Reimbursement Account in amount of six thousand five hundred dollars for hospitality supplies and five thousand five hundred for employee programs for a total amendment of twelve thousand dollars. Blue Cross Street Shield is reimbursing Denton County for expenses associated with the wellness program.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C, approval of budget amendment request one zero zero seven nine zero for the Public Facilities Department to Transfer Three Men, one hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars from Permanent Improvement Fund Unappropriate Contingency to Permanent Improvement Fund Phase One Electrical and Generator to add additional funding needed to complete Phase One of the Electrical and Generator project. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item seven D, approval of setting. We're going to skip seven D today. That will be reposted for a future date. Let's go to item eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials is presented for recording purposes only. Ms. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have two new hires in the County Auditor's Office, one lateral transfer in the County Clerk, one new hire in District Attorney's Office, one promotion in the District Attorney's Office, two new hires in Juvenile Approbation, four new hires and one promotion in the Sheriff's Office. Two of those new hires are detention officer ones. And we have two new hires in the tax office. That's it for this.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I was excited to see all the new hires in the jail. Let's go to item eight B, speaking of approval of reallocating funding to twenty detention officers, D O one positions, pay grade one oh four, currently budgeted at zero for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And any appropriate action? This action will facilitate ongoing hiring, enhance jail staffing levels at the Denton County Jail, and any appropriate action. And I've been waiting years for this, for this agenda item. I'll tell you that. I'm very excited to get us to where we're at this point. Members with a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I do want to commend this court for their consistent pay increases to our law enforcement so that we could become a more attractive entity. And I want to thank Sheriff Murphy and his team for their continued diligence in our hiring efforts so that we could, so we could fill these positions.
And that'll decrease overtime.
What's that?
And that'll decrease overtime, Judge.
Decrease overtime. Yeah, future savings.
Yep.
All right. Let's go to item ten A, approval of the preliminary acceptance of the Hickory Creek Park Road Reconstruction Project located in Commissioner Precinct Two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item ten B, approval of a request to hold a public hearing on April the twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five at nine A M. for the replay of the Mustang Multi-Family Edition lots one R and two. This is forty-seven point three zero eight, three zero eight acres located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item ten C, approval of a request to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at nine A M. to consider, approve, and/or take appropriate action for a special use permit request in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan in the zoning district, L R one two two four zero 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 four. This property is R five nine nine one three is located in abstract zero seven nine two. J Morton Survey, the tract is ninety-four. And this is two acres in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item ten D, approval of a request to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at nine A M. to consider, approve, and/or take appropriate action for a zoning change request in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan in the zoning district, L L R one two two four zero 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 five. This property is R five eight eight six seven and five eight seven seven six is located abstract number one two three eight. The W A Thompson Survey tracks nine and ten. This is sixteen point one eight acres.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is a ten E, approval of a request to hold a public hearing April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at nine A M. to consider, approve, and/or take appropriate action for a variance request in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan in the zoning district, L L R one two two four zero 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 six. Property R one four six two four one is located in Lake Ray Roberts Edition, Block One, Lots Thirteen. This is one point one eight three acres.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten F, approval of a request to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at nine A M. to consider, approve, and/or take appropriate action for a zoning change request in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan in the zoning district, L L R zero two two five zero 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 one. Properties R six zero 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 three and R one six five zero five five, R five two four one seven one, and R one zero five five nine one six are located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item twelve A, approval of mutual nondisclosure agreement between Denton County Sheriff's Office, D C S O, and the National Association of Field Training Officers, N A F T O. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13A, approval of completion of continuing education hours by Commissioner Ryan Williams for the calendar year 2024 as required by Section eight one zero zero two five of the Texas Local Government Code. The chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion?
I do.
Are you, are you wanting to see the transcript?
We'd love to see that documentation.
You want to see? Where's the backup?
You want to close those glasses, would you?
We're going to give you a pop quiz.
Congratulations, Ryan.
We're giving you a pop quiz. All right, we do have a motion and a second, and hazing, and so, all right, so all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It's important we do all those hours. Next is 14A, it's number one, assign legal representation on behalf of Denton County, Texas, in cause number two two one zero six nine two four eight one, style Jorilan versus Denton County, which is currently pending in the 481st Judicial District Court of Denton County, Texas, to the law firm of Matthew Shields, not Eden Davis and Beanland LLP, and two, exempt from the contract from employment, of employment with the law firm of Matthew Shields, not Eden Davis and Beanland LLP, from the requirement established by the Texas Local Government Code, Section two six two point zero two three, if applicable, and three, authorize a Denton County judge to sign a contract of employment with the law firm of Matthews Shields, not Eden Davis and Beanland LLP. The chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14B, opening and holding a public hearing related to creation of the Village Estates Public Improvement District, and following the conclusion of the hearing, consideration of a resolution by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, authorizing the creation of the Village Estates Public Improvement District located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct Four, in accordance with Chapter three seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code, with a motion to open a public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in, we are in a public hearing of the Village Estates Public Improvement District. Do we have anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of proposed creation? Good morning, sir.
Yes, Judge, and members of the court. My name is Robert Miklos. I'm the development attorney for this development. It is a one hundred and fifty-six acre development Village Estates in Precinct Four, and we are planning on bringing a high-quality, single-family residential development of planning one hundred and twenty-one one-acre home, home sites, and the creation of the Public Improvement District at that location is essential for bringing quality public infrastructure to help serve that development. The principle for the developers here, in case you have any technical questions that you would never want to ask a lawyer, but other than that, I'd ask for your approval of the resolution to create this Public Improvement District.
Perfect. Thank you for, thank you for being here. Mr. Miklos, is there anyone else in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the proposed creation? Hearing none? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, that is, to close the public hearing. Okay, so we are to a motion stage. Is that mic not working? Push that, push that, hold it down, Diane, real tight. Let go. Why's it not working? Bobby, can you turn on Commissioner's microphone, please? I wonder why it's not working. It's okay, we're going to hope. Bobby, Abernathy, will you please turn on Diane's mic? Well, the light, the red light is not, it's red and not green.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Judge. I wonder if we might take one step back, and I would just like to ask Mr. Miklos a question if you might.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I apologize for not being to speak in a normal timeframe. Can you tell me, do you have a fire protection agreement for this new housing addition?
I think the developer may have a better answer on that question.
Thank you very much.
Hold on just a second.
My name is Mahendra. Yes, we do, we are working with Denton County Fire Protection Team on that one. At this moment, I'm not sure whether we have it or not, but we are working with the team right now.
Okay, I'd like to have the people representing the county's Fire Protection District for unincorporated areas to be in touch with you, so could you leave contact information that I may give them? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we want to hold.
We can have the whole public hearing today. We can take the action item at a future date once we get that resolved. I think it's important.
Thank you, Judge, I appreciate it. I hope I might be able to do it.
All right, we'll just leave it on for now. Okay, so this is our public hearing, and we will, we will hold the action item until the fire issue is able to be resolved, so we will take no official action. We did have the public hearing. Let the record reflect that we did have the public hearing, and that Mr. Miklos did speak to the, speak in favor of that, but we will table any action until a future meeting, okay? Thank you, Commissioner Edmondson. I think that is important, that we have those thoughtful conversations in advance of action moving forward. Number fourteen C, same and related to that, so we will hold, the chair will hold, fourteen B and fourteen C. Let's go to fourteen D, approval of a professional services agreement between Denton County, Texas, and Aguirre and Fields LP for the Estates Drive project at a total cost of six hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, with funding amount of three hundred thousand dollars to come from Trip Twenty-Two Precinct Three Otter Line item nine two seven five eight six nine zero fours, there, and funding an amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars to come from the Estates Drive Trip Twenty-Two Precinct Three Otter Line item, number to be assigned upon issuance of the funds and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to our, our first addendum, which is approval of amendment number one to addendum number three to the master services agreement for architecture services, RFPQ two three two seven four five miscellaneous facilities projects between Denton County, Texas, and Park Hill, which amendment one adds to the addendum number three, scope of services, phase three bidding permitting construction administration services to be authorized on an, on an as-needed basis by the Denton County Construction Manager, and compensated at an hourly basis for, at the rates in architect's hourly rate schedule, provided that total compensation for the performance of all bidding estimated construction administration services described in the master agreement shall not exceed one thousand eight hundred dollars for bidding estimating, and thirteen thousand two hundred for construction administration, and two, phase two design services in the NTE amount fifty-seven thousand four hundred dollars with reimbursable expenses for both phases two and three not to exceed two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars with funding to come from the permanent improvement fund, architect fees, Otter Line item eight zero five three eight zero nine zero one zero, as requested by the Denton County Purchasing Director.
Move approval, and I have a comment, too.
Chair will second. Go ahead.
So Commissioner Court members, this is the finalization of the architectural contract for our new court, our temporary courtroom in the Moore Street facility, and we obviously want to move very quickly on this so that we can give a home to our new court. The, just so you know, we really do not expect to use much, if any, at all of the bidding or construction administration, because we'll be likely doing that in-house, but we want to have it in here in case, so this should be just essentially that sixty thousand dollars or less, but excited to get it moving.
Perfect, thank you. I want to thank you for your efforts on that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go back to item fourteen B. We'll reopen fourteen B. We'll talk to Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, thank you, Judge. One of the things I wanted to add to this is this is being a one-acre lot, this is not Village Estates, it's not a municipal utility district, they do not have a political overlay. This is a request for a public improvement district only. A district is not a government entity that can do contracts for the county. I would say if there is a mud in the future for this development, at that point, we would have a contractual ability to contract with them for fire protection agreement.
But don't they need some sort of fire protection plan before the Development Department will approve them? Doesn't have to be with us.
Oh, the only requirement for a fire protection plan is in the municipal utility district laws, or water control improvement district for some other time.
Let's do what I'd advise it.
Absolutely. Yes.
Oh, thank you for that clarification. Thank you for the clarification. All right, what we're going to do is, let's, let's go ahead and go to item seventeen, is community updates. We'll start with Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Judge. Want to congratulate head coach Billy Jordan for, he's a Liberty Christian baseball coach for his one-hundredth win in his fifth year, and then also want to congratulate to the Guyer High School Coach of the Year, Grant Wong. That's a huge, huge accomplishment as well. And then there was two players from Guyer High School that were named co-most valuable players on the all-area boys' basketball team. A nice honor as well was Jordan Lowry and a Mister Rodriguez, so I want to congratulate those two young men, and that's all I've got, Judge.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. Got a few items here in the colony. We have movies in the park. It's going to be Transformers One, that'll be on the fourth, six thirty at the Athletic Club. Peeps and Paws Easter Bunny photo shoot with pets, that's on the fifth, at the Animal Service Colony, Animal Services Parking Lot, eleven to two on the fifth, and then Legal Aid of Northwest Texas will be helping answer questions about legal issues at the library, Colony Library, on the fourth, from ten to two. Frisco's having Dinosaur Day in the District, and that will be at the PGA District, and on April fifth, from two to nine P.M. And then Carrollton has Paws on the Square, and that is April fifth, nine to noon downtown, and that's always fun with all the pets there. And then in the Third Annual Health and Safety Fair, that'll be at Standridge Stadium on the fifth, from nine to one. There's a lot of good information there, and we'll make sure you go out for that. Also, going to be Taste on the Tarmac on the eleventh, that is a, for competition for culinary students in high school at CFPISD, and then just a couple of congratulations, Creekview Mustang Senior Cameron Landberg was selected Athlete, Athlete of the Week for baseball, and the Carrollton Public Library received Library of Excellence Award from TML, and that is a fine accomplishment, too, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mitchell.
I have Lakeside Music Series in Flower Mound at Lakeside Parkway, at the shops at Lakeside Village. It's going to be April the fourth, seven thirty to nine thirty, the tenth year of this music series. Have Taste Around the Village on April fourth, at six P.M. at Shoal Creek in Holland Village. It's an annual fundraiser, razor for local nonprofits. Coffee with First Responders, April fifth, eight A.M. to ten A.M. at Chick-fil-A for the first responders of Lake City's Corinth Police Department, Hickory Creek, Lake Dallas, and Lake City's Fire Department. That's going to be April the fifth, eight to ten. In Louisville, I have a Spring Fling on First Friday, April fourth, five P.M. to eight P.M. in Old Town Louisville, shopping, treats, scavenger hunts, and prizes, breakfast with Easter Bunny and egg, Easter egg hunt. I think the Commissioners Court need to go, come do that. That's on April the fifth in Louisville at Thrive. I'll take all the candy. This is a yearly event, photo opportunities, and then the First Saturday Nature Walk, April fifth, ten A.M. to twelve P.M. at Layler in Louisville on Jones Street. Two-hour hike for all ages. You can work that candy off if you do the hike.
Perfect. Can't wait. All right, Commissioner Edmondson.
Well, with Easter coming up, we all have a lot of Easter-related events in our precinct. We have a Shopping Day's vendor market in Denton on April fifth, from nine to four. You can explore and shop seasonal decor, clothing, gifts, sweets, and more. Then there's a toddler Easter egg hunt at the Explorium in Denton, April fifth, from nine to ten. This is an egg hunt designed specifically for the little explorers under three years old, and they'll have sensory play there. In Justin, the cleanup event is on April fifth, from eight to twelve at City Hall. Drop off a variety of items for free disposal, additional items at a charge. In New Fairview, they're having an Easter egg hunt on April fifth, nine to eleven A.M. in the community park, and they'll have free coffee, bounce houses, a petting zoo, photos with the Easter Bunny, an egg hunt, et cetera. And then in Trophy Club, the Women's Club Annual Spring Committee, Spring Community Garage Sale. So they'll have a garage sale there that'll be going on basically from eight A.M. to noon, and proceeds go towards their scholarship fund. The last announcement is one that is very, very important. Doesn't involve candy or Easter egg hunts, but I'd like to let you all know that we're going to have a foster care and adoption one-on-one information session. That's going to be in Denton on April fifth, at ten thirty in the morning, at the Emily Fowler Library. The Hart Gallery of North Texas will walk attendees through the steps of the state foster care system, hopefully to become foster or adoptive parents. Y'all, this is so important. We have hundreds of children who need to be in foster care, and there's no place to put them. Please, if you've ever thought about maybe God asking you to be a foster parent, please come find out more information, and let's try to get these Denton County kids settled in Denton County. Many of the people who are in foster care right now are not Denton County children. They're coming from other counties, so the responsibility to these kids, and I urge you to attend this session, Foster Care and Adoption one-on-one. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. I'd like to give a big shout out to our Denton County Office of History and Culture. Flower Mound, we've done a great partnership between the county and the town of Flower Mound, restoring the Gibson Grant Log Home, and so the Gibson Grant House, a restored eighteen hundreds home in Flower Mound, will be designated as a Texas historical landmark on Saturday, May the third, at ten A.M., and the Denton County Historical Commission and Flower Mound Town officials will host an event to mark this recognition, so congratulations to the town and to the county on this, this designation. And I just want to, every time I talk about this project, I always want to give a shout out to Curtis Grant, who was the developer, who, who bought that property with a one-story ranch farmhouse that he was going to tear down, and he was in the middle of some early preliminary just site assessment after he closed on it and discovered that log cabin buried in the walls of the front living room. He called me, goes, Andy, I think we, can you come down here? I think I found a log cabin. I said, how do you find a log cabin? He goes, it was under the sheet rock, and he could have, he could have demoed that project and not have sold and known about it, but he didn't, and I begged him not to do it, and I said, let's try to do something with the town of Flower Mound, and I'm glad that he did and got to develop this project.
That was a good way to protect it all those years.
And preserve it. Yeah, it was a, it was a hidden jewel, and it's great, and so the Flower Mound's done a great job with that, and we've received a grant from the state courtesy of Senator Jay Nelson years ago, and so it's just a great project. So I want to, hopefully, people can join us on May the third. And I would like to just remind everybody that we have unsettled weather this week through Saturday evening here in Denton County, and so we do have threats of severe thunderstorms, which could produce large hail, damaging winds, isolated tornadoes, et cetera. So anyway, heavy rain, we are expecting several inches of rain here in the county this week, so I'd just like to remind everybody to please be weather aware. If you haven't gone onto the Denton County website and registered for our emergency alerts, I encourage y'all to do so. We do have an emergency item for today in addition to our agenda, and we have to, we will, we have to wait one hour to, after posting, to take that action up, so we will re, we're going to take a fifty-four-minute recess, and we will recon, we pick up this meeting, and that's where we're going to take a recess till ten fifty-four.
Judge.
Yes.
I'm sorry, if I may, we do have an item under legislative agenda?
We are taking no action on that. That's just a placeholder. Thank you, though. Thank you, Bianca. Okay, so we are going to take, thank you for keeping me lined up. We are going to take a fifty-four-minute recess. recess.